Welcome to After Hours, Conversations for Music Educators presented by Amro Music. This is where we share ideas and work towards solutions to better serve your students. This week, Nick Everwater and his two guests will talk about ways to have a proactive and productive relationship with your school's principal, superintendent, and school board. This conversation was recorded April 6th, 2021. Hello, everyone, and welcome to After Hours Conversations for Music Educators. We're thrilled that you're joining us tonight. We've got some incredible guests and panelists lined up as we talk about how to have a proactive and productive conversation with your building principal, your school board, and your superintendent. Now, I know sometimes there's a tendency that we're a little hesitant to approach these individuals. And tonight, we want to break down those barriers and we want to talk about what a proactive relationship looks like with these important community leaders. Now, before I get started, I've just got some basic housekeeping items that I want to walk through with everybody. First, if you're joining us live either on Facebook or on the Zoom stream, you're welcome to use the Q and A or the comment box. We'll be able to interact with those throughout the conversation tonight. So if you have any questions, feel free to jump in, let us know what's on your mind, and we will be sure to answer any questions you have. Now, the next conversation on the calendar on April 20th, we're going to be talking about how to maximize the relationship with your local music store. And our panel will consist of representatives from three different music stores from across the country, and how educators can get the most out of that relationship with their local school music dealer. Now, if you're looking for this conversation or any of our previous conversations from After Hours, they can be found online at www.amromusic.com/afterhours or wherever you get your podcasts. And speaking of podcasts, our most recent Director Spotlight episode dropped last week, featuring part two of an incredible two-part conversation with Leif Cook, who's the director of bands at Dobbins Bennett High School in Kingsport, Tennessee. Leif and I sat down and really broke down what it's like to lead a BOA Grand National caliber program, and all of the blessings and the curses and the challenges that can come along of leading a program of 370 members. Incredible conversation. And again, that was released directly to your favorite podcast platform. So if you want to listen to that conversation with Leif, be sure to hit the subscribe button. And then our last announcement before we get started, the company I work for, Amro Music, has continued to support the After Hours podcast and webinar series, including the production and subscription expenses associated with these productions. So if you're enjoying the webinars, if you're enjoying the podcasts and you'd like to support After Hours, you can simply do so by purchasing your classroom supplies, your orchestra, your band program needs from Amro Music's Director Services team. And the guys out here, Seth and Alan and Linda are a wonderful team, are more than happy to take care of you whenever you're ready to do that. So enough from me. Let's meet our panel. I've got, joining me today, Mr. Bob Morrison and Chris Perkins. Good to see you, gentlemen. How are you today?
Good, Nick. Thank you.
Good to see you, Chris.
Very well, Nick. It is great to be here with you.
Thanks. So before we get started, help our listeners get to know each of you a little bit. First off, who are you? Where are you from? What do you do? And then let's just do a quick little icebreaker, and I'm going to throw one out here. Looking back, what style choice from your past makes you cringe the most today when you see pictures of it? So I'm just going to throw that out there. So Chris, we'll start with you. How are you, my friend?
Hey, I'm good, man. That's a tough one. This is incriminating right off the bat. I don't know why I signed up for this. No, I think, you know, between, it's a tie between Jinko pants, which were really huge shorts that looked like they had underwear built in and the waistband. So it looked like you were sagging all the time. And also just a flat split of hair in the middle. I used to actually have hair. And so that was probably it. I've got an incriminating picture from school somewhere laying around, but yeah.
Perfect. So you gave us not one, but two. And Chris, just tell us a little bit about not just your taste and style, but your professional background these days.
So originally was a band director. I did band directing for six years, two in Arkansas and four in Mississippi. And then worked my way into school administration. I did four years as an assistant principal, and I'm completing my second year as a head principal. I'm currently at Lewisburg High School in Olive Branch, Mississippi.
Great. Well, great to have you on, Chris, and welcome to After Hours, my friend. And Bob, welcome back. Welcome back to After Hours. Good to see you.
Absolutely. Good to see you as well. So my, my ill-fated fashion choice, I think, was, and I'm definitely dating myself, platform shoes, platform shoes and bell-bottom pants, baby. So
Good, Bob.
For the young'uns out there, go look it up.
Go look it up, man. Do those pictures stay at the bottom of the shoebox where they live? They don't come out to visit often?
No, I believe there is one incriminating photo and it's in a box, in another box in the basement, so.
That's great. And for those that don't know you or haven't caught your previous episode, just tell us a little bit about your musical background and how you ended up on your local school board, school board, Bob.
Sure. Well, I'm currently the CEO of Quadrant Research and also the Director of Arts at New Jersey. My background, I actually started at Memphis when it was Memphis State as a music education major, found my way into the business world, working for Pearl in Nashville for several years before going to work for the industry and overseeing music education advocacy and public policy for NAMM. From there, created a couple of organizations, including Music for All, before ending up with my current company, Quadrant Research. I'm based in northern New Jersey and ended up, you know, after having, you know, put in 25 years of of education policy work, just as part of my day job, I found it would be interesting to run for local school board to see, you know, if I could bring that expertise to have some positive impact on the school district where I serve. And I'm now in my ninth year, my third term on the board, and I also serve on the New Jersey School Boards Association as a member of their Board of Directors. So I've taken my board role as seriously as I've taken any other role that I've played in my career.
Great. Well, I'm excited to get some perspective too from just, of course, you've been a passionate advocate, but as a school board leader, because I know you don't interact just with music programs, but you see the entirety of the school board. And so I think that'll make for some great conversations as to the role music education plays. So Chris, let's start with you. I think in order for us to understand and how to have a mutually beneficial relationship, I think it's important to understand the shoes that the other person is walking in. So just help us understand some of maybe the high points and the bullet points of what it's like being a building principal. And I mean, Lewisburg, a 5A, a 6A, I mean, it's a big high school. So you have a lot of hats that you have to wear. Help us unpack that.
Right. So it's interesting that you say that. Anybody that's in the building right now, we've got a couple of things going on today. We've got, we're playing 6A ball against Tupelo today. They're out there getting ready right now for JV. And then also, we're having a family and parent night, Patriot Night for our musical, for our spring musical. And so they're in the auditorium and about 15 minutes before I jumped on this Zoom call, they were cooking popcorn, popping popcorn in the concession stand in the gym lobby. And I guess it got a little smoky and the fire alarms went off. And so, you know, we're, we've got all these things going on. I've got this Zoom call coming up. As the principal, we're the number one person responsible for all of that. And so, you know, the fire department's coming out. Everybody's wondering if the building's burning down. Do we need to evacuate? And it's usually in those moments where someone comes up, whether it's a band director, where this music associated, or any other, and you talk about all the other parties and stakeholders in the school community, but it could be coaches, it could be an English teacher, that right in that moment or right after it, they have no perspective that that just occurred. And they come up with a very pressing need in their world. And of course, we pay them to, to focus on what is most important and whatever we assign them with. But as far as you talking about all the hats in our perspective as administration, it's interesting how many of those small emergencies we have in a day, and then someone comes up with theirs. And we've got to give them, you know, equal treatment and treat it just like what it is.
Yeah, that's exactly right. All the examples that you just ripped through there, I think really builds good perspective. Chris, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit because you're a former band director and a great band director at that. Is there anything that you look back on and you said, knowing what I know now as a principal, I would have handled these things differently when I was a band director?
Right. So what's, hey, what's the book you have just published? They didn't, they didn't have a class on that, is that right?
Yeah. Did I miss this class? Yeah.
By the way, no, if anyone out there watching, he did not pay me to plug that. So just so you know, but I'm sure it's fantastic. But no, I reflect on that all the time. And one of the situations, and you know, I'll just call myself out on it, is going back through college, I don't know that they prepped us for this. It might've been in some, you know, entry level education class, but no one in the band directing world told us how big of a deal taking attendance was going to be to principals, apparently. They get really weird about that. And number two, state testing. I mean, when they start looking at that list and they're looking for proctors and test administrators, they're going to go straight to that band director list. And there was this, there was a time, I was going to call it out, where I was, I was working on my administrator license here. I was doing an internship in the school that I was at at the time. I was really close with the principals and I was in there talking to them. And one of them was joking around and as an aside said, "Oh, by the way, Mr. Perkins, mark this date on your calendar from April 1st till May 26th. Y'all aren't gonna be able to play in band. Y'all need to just find something else to do for those two months." And I laughed at it because I thought it was a joke, but they were dead serious. It's one of those things that you don't, you don't hear about. Of course, we wind up playing, we found a solution to it. But as far as being put in a testing room and that kind of stuff, handled that as well as I thought I could have reflecting back on it, I would have never said half the things that I, you know, as a band director, looking back at to my administration at the time, in the way that I was defending my program. But again, I was being paid to advocate for my band program and these parents' investment in their, their kids' musical instrument and journey and all that kind of stuff. So yeah, a very different perspective now that I look back on it.
Love it. So if you want to be good friends with your principal, take role. Get role in on top.
Yeah, right.
So Bob, how about for you? I mean, help us unpack maybe a day in the life of a school board member.
Well, I think it starts with an understanding of what the school board member's role is. You know, they like to say that, you know, our job is not to run the school. That's the job of the superintendent, you know, our, you know, that's the superintendent is hired to run the school. The school board's role is to make sure that the school district is well-run, right? So we hold the administration accountable for the things that we have prioritized as important district goals. So, and oftentimes, we're going to be involved in, you know, looking at a variety of different things. Right now, we're in our budgeting process for the year, and, and this is a very unusual budgeting process because of the funding that's coming down from the state and federal level and the changes that we've had to make to our environment. I'm in a district right now where we're in hybrid, but getting ready to welcome back five days of learning. So there's been a lot of conversations about how do we get to that point? And even though we're all going to be open five days and anyone that can come will come, we still have about half our building that will be remote. So as a result, this is kind of working our transition into being able to, you know, get the school to reopen. And from the board level, it's our responsibility to make sure that we can provide the resources to the administration so that they can do the things they need to do to make sure that our buildings can open safely and our students can come in and, and finally be in person. So, you know, this has been a very unusual year. I think that any, any principal, any superintendent, any school board member, actually probably anyone involved in education, will say that they haven't worked, they've never worked as hard as they've worked this past year. And the same is true for school board members. I mean, we're meeting constantly. There's always new information that we have to stay up on. There was always changing guidance, whether it was from the federal level or at the state level. But in our particular state, it was ultimately up to the individual district as to what you were going to do. And so because of that, we were obviously always doing with, dealing with a changing set of circumstances. But I think, you know, a playoff of one of the things that Chris said is, you know, the, the music educator has their point of view that they're advocating for, that that's their job to look after their program. But there, there are times where it's important to take a step back and look at the bigger picture, you know, to understand what's going on in the entirety of the building and that what may be urgent to them for their program at the moment may not be necessarily the most important thing, you know, in the universe of what's going on at the school. So it's important to always have some perspective and to prioritize whether or not that particular emergency or what appears to be an emergency at that moment really is a level of emergency that you're going to, you know, in, bring it to, you know, your principal or your, your administrators to try to deal with. You always got to think about, about context. So that's the first thing. And the second thing that I've seen a lot of music educators, a trap they fall into is that when a decision is made, and Chris kind of cited one, there are, there are going to be unintended consequences. We can't test or you can't play because we need to test and your playing is going to interrupt our testing, right? So the unintended consequences was he's not going to be able to play. That wasn't their intent, right? So, but oftentimes when something happens, they go, oh, they're targeting my program, you know? Or, you know, they did that intentionally because they wanted to mess with, with, with our program. And I can assure you that particularly at school board level, no one's sitting around trying to figure out how to mess with your program, right? There are bigger fish to fry. There are bigger things that they're dealing with. So the, the reaction from the educator should not be from the standpoint that someone's trying to do something to you. But somebody has done something and there may be some ramifications and you need to sit down and say, hey, I'm not sure if you have thought through this, but I just wanted to share with you the potential implications that this may have on our program and might there be some other solution that we can work together to find. So thinking of that a decision is coming from not a bad place, but maybe just not, you know, not informed or that they weren't focused on it at the time, you know, give the administration the benefit of the doubt before you start beating them up, you know, over a decision that they make.
Yeah, that's such a great point, Bob. And I know a lot of times we can jump to conclusions. And when it's the world we live in, I mean, it feels invasive, you know, because we're thinking, man, we've worked hard and we've done all of these things. And, but, but we, we do have to keep the perspective of the, the global component of everything that's going on. So Bob, help me understand, and if you don't mind, take off your, I mean, you've spent an entire career involved in music. And if you could, just solely wear your school board hat for a moment. What does the end zone look like for a successful music program from the perspective of a school board member with no musical background?
Well, I think, I think numbers matter, meaning, you know, we want to see a program that's engaging as many of the students as possible. And sometimes that may mean you, we need to be educated on what is needed to ensure that there are multiple pathways for students to be involved in, in a particular program. We want a program that will be a positive reflection on the school, like anything that we do. We want there to be a positive reflection on, on the school because in many instances, the, the music program is one of the more visible programs in, in the school. So they want to make sure that, that it represents the, the, the school well. And I want a music program that engages me, meaning that, that they're contacting us about what they're doing and not when they want something, right? You know, everyone comes when they want something, you know, budget time, the hand comes out and everything else. I want somebody to share with me what's happening with the program, you know, how are they doing? What's successful? You know, how, how has, has recruiting, you know, been? How are the feeder systems working? I'm, I'm always interested in understanding how the infrastructure is set up and have we provided? And whether it's music or science or any other thing, I want to know the same thing is, you know, do you have the things necessary for you to be able to be successful? And that only comes from having somebody share information with you. And that, that doesn't necessarily always mean that it should be the music educator because I know sometimes, you know, our, our superintendents get a little wiggly when our, when our staff members are talking directly to board members. So, you know, there is chain of command and I get that. But I would, I love to hear from the parents. And, and, you know, putting my music advocate hat on, I often talk in terms of, you know, advocacy is not just getting up on the soapbox and spouting off facts and figures, right? It's really about relationships. And I want to know that, you know, parents that are supporting the program and, and students will share, you know, their thoughts and feelings about the program, both positive, you know, with, what's, what's being successful and if they have concerns. And then, you know, with that information, then I can go, is that, is that something that I need to worry about? Or is that actually something, hey, you should talk to the art supervisor. They would be able to help you with that particular thing. Or have you brought this to the attention of, you know, the band director? But I, you know, as a, as a board member, you know, my role is, is always to ask the question, what can we be doing to help them be successful in providing a quality experience for our students?
That's great, Bob. Chris, how about for you? I mean, as the building principal, and again, I challenge you to set aside your long career and history as a music educator. And let's just assume for a minute, maybe you came up as the baseball coach. You have very little experience. You don't know what it means to get a one at concert festival. I mean, from the principal's perspective, what is your measuring stick and indicators of success of a healthy band program or orchestra program?
So this year especially, the definition of overall success varies greatly than what I would normally say in a year. And, and that, that is, there was no metric. And I told all of my coaches and all my sponsors this year. And our metric was, dude, did we get to perform? Did we get to play? Did we get to compete? And so much about program success this year was if we didn't take proper COVID mitigation strategies, you didn't get to play. You didn't get to perform and do anything. So that, so program success for us this year at Lewisburg has been, did you do what was necessary and create an environment that was safe for these students to stay in the game and get to play? And, and I have fantastic directors here and great coaches and, and they did it, they did everything we asked for. And it can be very tedious, the expectations of an administration when you're, you know, going through all this red tape and that kind of stuff with COVID safety. But they played, they got to perform and still we, they held themselves to that high standard and would come back disappointed with a result. And, and I kept saying, and I took the pressure off and I said, did your kids get to play? Did they get to perform? So that was the, that was the measure of success this year. But as a principal and taking that hat off of a music director, I think the key that every principal wants to see, of course, we all want to win. We want the, the hardware and the trophies to come back because that is a point, it does point to success. But at the end of the day, do the parents and the stakeholders and the administration know that the director or sponsor is getting every bit of potential from the kid in the program? At the end of the day, are you getting the full potential of what your kids are capable of in your program? And if we, if we know that, then the, the number, the one, the excellent or superior rating doesn't matter as much in the, in the eyes of the parent or the administration, as long as we know every day, these kids are coming in, they're being pushed, they're being motivated. I agree with Bob on the numbers. I think that it, it's not that you want to have every kid involved in the school, but that you're seeing kids gravitate towards this program. And so much starts at the top with the, the director and the personality and how they engage kids. And, you know, we, we're in such a competitive market now in, in everything. It's so overly competitive. And so when I look at a successful program, I look at, do we have that opportunity for overachievers? For our students who want to go to the next level and see that success? But also do we have an inclusive mindset in our program where maybe I'm, the band's the reason I come to school every day? Or whatever it is, and is there a place for my kid in that? They may not be the greatest. They may not be able to be first chair and everything. But is there a place for them to participate in this program? And I think that's, that's it, is when you have an opportunity for the varied levels of musicians to participate, that's what I'm looking for. Rather than just an elite, small group of kids, I want to see as many kids participate as possible to get that experience.
Yeah. I think that's such good perspective too, because, you know, I think in, in the music education world, I mean, we like to be successful on the things that are, are visible to us. How many kids went to Allstate? How many kids went to AllRegion? Did we get a one at festival? Did we win this contest? And those are all wonderful things, but I love what you're saying is say, once you start getting to that building, that superintendent, and then really to that school board measure, those measures of success maybe become less important and it becomes the much more visible, the community component, like Bob said, are you involved in the community? Is it a welcoming place that kids can be a part of? Is there an energy amongst the program? And those become the measuring sticks as we kind of move outside the music education community. Am I understanding that correctly?
Absolutely. Because you can have a, you can have a state championship, year after year title. You could go to BOA, you know, using musical terms, but have a very unhealthy climate in your program. You could have a very unhealthy aspiration for success there. But, and, and kids are doing it. It's their opportunity to be successful, but no, it, climate and culture really, really matter.
Yeah, love that. Well, now that we've set the, the big picture, I'd like to move down a little bit to a more granular level and maybe talk about specific behaviors and some ways that demonstrate that proactive communication. And so Bob and Chris, am I asking you guys the same questions? And I would ask that you change the names to protect the guilty in these scenarios. But do you have any stories where you look back, and again, please keep it anonymous, but you go, that was not the right way to communicate with your principal or your local school board? So maybe we can give some examples first of what not to do and migrate into what the healthy relationship looks like. So Bob, anything come to mind for you?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll give you one. And we had a situation where, you know, and it was kind of, it was COVID related, you know, we had planned to, you know, we, we opened at the beginning of the year. So we opened our building in September. We were hybrid with half in, half out, you know, on a, on a rotating schedule. But the, we had some educators that didn't want to come back in. And so what they started to do is they started to, instead of communicating with the administration and the board, they started to communicate with the parents about things that we weren't, weren't going to do. Like we weren't providing stipends apparently to allow for there to be clubs and activities. Therefore, setting, you know, sending the message out to the community that we were planning on canceling all clubs and activities because of COVID, which was not true at all. But they didn't come to the administration to say, hey, we, we think that you're, this is happening. Is this true? And instead, they got the parents all riled up and they got the students all riled up and concerned that, that we were taking something away from them. And I can tell you, I have never been as angry in a public meeting as I was on that day when I took to task our, our teachers' union over the fact that they were intentionally misinforming the community and upsetting our students in a, in a way that was hurting them and was completely fabricated with what we were trying to do. We'd actually met earlier that week going, okay, what do we need to do to get to the point that we can get our clubs operational once we get the building open safely? And it just create, you know, what, what bothered me is that the students were, their emotions were toyed with in, in this instance, you know, if they, if they wanted to pick, you know, some sort of game to play with the board or the administration, that's one thing. But when you start involving students in a negative way and creating anxiety for them on top of an already anxious environment that COVID created, yeah, that was, that was not cool.
Yeah, I could see where that would be frustrating. So, so anytime, I, I mean, it sounds like if the point of the relationship has gotten to that point, we've taken the wrong term somewhere and we need to back up and be sure we all have the same information. Be sure we're all on the same page and unpack that together. Because if, if you're calling for the lanterns and the pitchforks and getting parents wild, round up and getting students involved, the conversation's probably not going to go well. I mean, Bob, have you ever seen that go well when we get to that point?
Never. And, and that's why, from, from a music perspective, a music advocacy perspective, I always say, do not shoot until you see the whites of their eyes, right? And that means that just because something is said, get your facts straight first. Make sure you, you know, if, if somebody says they're going to cut the music program, well, is that what they actually said? And maybe go have a conversation, maybe have a parent find out what's going on, you know? If, if that was really the case, or if there's some miscommunication, oftentimes there's misinformation that's out there. And so what you need to do is get your facts straight before you get to that point where you're, you're bringing out the pitchforks and everything else. Now, there are rare occasions where you have to go, you know, kind of to DEFCON one with the pitchforks. But those should be the rare, very rare, rare, rare exceptions. And most of the time, the stuff can be resolved just by talking with one another.
Yeah. Yeah. If you're getting to that point, I'd say you better be prepared to die on that hill because it's very possible that you will.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Chris, how about for you? In your time as a principal, have there been any examples of communication where you think, not the way we need to be handling this conversation? Have, have there been any examples of communication where you think, not the way we need to be handling this conversation?
You know, not specific examples, but to Bob's point, that is a case study. I mean, it, it has probably, probably been seen over and over, that exact kind of thing. But Bob, we don't live in that world anymore where you can control that narrative. Once it gets on social media and that's, you know, once, once you get that sort of going. And, and let's be honest, parents and students had a lot of time at home to think and, and talk uh, about this kind of stuff as we waited to, you know, open schools and that kind of stuff. But, uh, Nick, to, to talk about this, it's what's, you know, I, I didn't ask this question, but that's why it's so important for the band director or the program sponsor or the fine arts director to have that relationship with their parents and that open line of communication. To try to make sure that they have good expectations for their families. And that they know there's an open door policy where they, if they have these issues, these questions or concerns and things they've heard through the, the grapevine, that they can come and ask, what's the validity to this? But we don't, we don't do that so much, uh, in, in with around education or really with anything anymore. It's more throw the, throw the pitchfork, throw the spear and then check for facts later. And, uh, Bob, I, I've got to imagine that whatever the petition was, whatever the frustration was, you were, and I, I'm sure you are a fair and equitable man, but I, I'm going to say that probably your ears were a little more shut off by the way they handled the situation, you know, it's, it's how you present. Don't tarnish your message by the delivery and how you go about it. Because then it's not about, you know, what's actually happening, it's how you approached it. Is that about right?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, you know, message is important, but so is the messenger. Right? And, and how it's delivered. And, you know, when I do a presentation on working with school boards, I actually have a slide that says, leave the pitchforks at home. Right? Because nothing, nothing good will ever happen when they, when they come out. Um, and it's, it's, it's everyone just ends up getting defensive. They go into their own corners and, 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 and they get angry. So you're, you're, you're absolutely right. And, and I think you're right, social media has, uh, changed the, 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 the game a little bit. It's very easy for, uh, misinformation to take on a life of its own. Um, and that's why, you know, we've talked with our administration about needing to make sure that we are over communicating, you know, what we're doing, over communicating, um, you know, about the, the changes at the school or anything that's upcoming. And then also at, you know, kind of reinforced with the staff, we've, are responsible for ensuring the wellbeing of the students. And we've got to be very mindful of, uh, their health and wellness right now. And that means not doing things that will unnecessarily, uh, create more anxiety than, than already exists.
Yeah. But I, I think at the program level, we can, we can have some comfort in knowing that, you know, nobody really wants to do away with music for the sake of not having music. I mean, everybody wants to have a successful program. So when these things happen, it's not usually intrinsically motivated. Somebody's got a beef with the program or they just don't like music, or they just don't see the value in music. I mean, I think our advocacy efforts, we should continue to be vigilant. But, you know, there's a lot of things to support the importance of music. So I think we can find comfort in knowing that it's probably extrinsic that's driving decisions. And let's see if we can uncover that because that means that there's probably a solution to it. There's probably something we can do if we're open minded with positive communication. So great examples of maybe what not to do. And, and now let's start to evolve the conversation into the behaviors and the actions that represent proactive, positive relationship building with these behaviors. So Bob, I'll come back to you and you mentioned the chain of command. And so we want to be delicate. But what does, but you also mentioned that you want to hear, you want to know. So what does that look like from a band director to have a proactive, positive line of communication with a school board?
Well, I mean, sometimes it's going to develop, you know, particularly if the school board member has a student that's in your program. Right? So there's, there's often there, there can be that, you know, the, the school board member is around because their son or daughter is involved in the program. And therefore they get a little bit more of a view, you know, from that standpoint. So that's, that's certainly one way. But the other, you know, a couple of other ways that I think are important is, um, and, and again, I, I talk about this a lot. Uh, at our school board meeting, if there are three people in the, in, in, in the room, it's a stampede. You know, we must've done something wrong if there are three citizens in, in, in the building. Um, and the, the point that I'm saying is, you know, it would be simple just to show up. And not necessarily the, the band director or the music educator, but the, the band parent, you know, or the music parent. If they, if they show up, it shows that they're concerned about the district. They're concerned about, you know, what's going on and they don't even have to say anything. They can just be there, but they could also in public comment, stand up and say, we want to share some information about some of the great success that we've seen with the program this year. So just by showing up and then having a parent say, this is what, you know, here are some things that we really want you to know about the good work of the program. Oftentimes that may not necessarily filter up to the board mem-, board members because of everything else that, that we're dealing with as much as we try to get all that information. So when a parent shows up just to call our attention to, hey, you should really know about these things that happened in our program and how it's had a positive impact on our students. Um, the other thing you can do is in many, in many districts, they often will have students come to perform at the beginning of the board member, board meetings, right? Visibility, what better way to connect than to have your programs visible at the board meetings? And it's just like, here's a reminder, we're celebrating, you know, this aspect of, of how we engage with our students. Uh, and look, no board member is going to say, no, I don't want to hear from your students. Right? No, that, that's never going to be an answer that comes out of them. But the most important thing, and the thing that you never, or you rarely hear at a board meeting is somebody that shows up to say, thank you. Thank you for making the investment in the new band uniforms. Thank you for expanding the scheduling to allow us to add that music technology class. Thank you for buying all of the PPE equipment that we needed so that our ensemble could be in person this year and, and be together. Just the act of somebody saying thank you is so rare that it sticks out. So that just that, that act of, of kindness, because look, school board members are not paid to do this, right? It's all volunteer. They're all elected officials. And so every once in a while, it's nice to hear somebody appreciate the work that the board puts in to help provide opportunities for students.
That's a great point, Bob. And just quick ratio, how many complaints to thank yous do you think you get as a school board member?
Oh, that's gotta be a hundred to one at, at, on the low end.
So you can easily be the one. So, I mean, the, 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 the quick things that I'm hearing stick out. You mentioned share the good news. I mean, you, it would be very easy to do a concise state of the program presentation or handout flyer, email, whatever it is, but just with your parents, whoever it is, share what's going on in your program. Simple. And then number two was find a way to perform, you know, be visible. And then number three is just to say thank you. Uh, I mean, those are three really tangible ways that somebody can have a great proactive conversation. Because let's be honest, we're all going to need something at some point. But if we do those three things, when our, when our ask gets there, it's like, oh yeah, I remember, I remember Mr. Morrison, he's that band director that always tells us what's going on and he thanks us. And I like that guy. We'll, we'll make room in the budget for him.
It makes, it, it really makes a difference.
That's great. Uh, Chris, how about for you? Because in your position as the building principal, you're a lot more visible than Bob is. And oftentimes you're the first line of, of defense that somebody comes to when they're wanting to have these conversations. So help me understand what a proactive and productive relationship looks like between a music educator and their building principal.
Right? So one of the things that, um, I, I, I picked up along the way and I didn't practice this, but as a principal, I would love it if, if people did this with me more often. But, um, to create a weekly email. And it says, this week I am, put in the subject line, this week I am, dot, dot, dot. And then just put what you're doing in, in your, in your program, the class, whatever it is. And that is a very non-invasive way, like rather than a standing appointment with your principal every week at seven AM on a Monday, you've got a, you've got an email that's dropping in there. It's like a lesson plan, it's, but it's more broken down into just bullet point objectives. And it says, this is what we're doing, this is what I'm working towards, this is where I'm growing this week. And that way, as a principal in my schedule, I can quickly go in there and look. I may not read it every time, but I can go and look and I have access to see very quickly where you are in your program, what season you're in, especially, I'm going to say, uh, I don't take for granted that I'm a music director in the past, but for people that don't have that background, like coaches or classroom teachers that become administrators, it, we, they may not know the seasons of band, music, uh, choir and all that kind of stuff. And so it's very important to, to educate them and let them see what that looks like. Uh, principals have a large scope of people and programs that, that, that we supervise. It's very tough to keep up with where everybody's at in their progression. It's very easy to not see a teacher for an entire week and what they're doing and, and for them to get lost in the shuffle. And so making yourself visible, Bob touched on this, making yourself visible and that work that you're doing, uh, is very important. You know, Bob, you talked about, uh, social media a little bit. It's very important, not, not all the time, uh, can we bring or invite a board member to come out or a principal to come out? But it's so easy with social media to bring those performances to them. And so being proactive and controlling that narrative on social media. So you've got to, you say there's a hundred to one ratio of thank yous to no thank yous. You've got to create that same media narrative on all the great things that are happening in your program to where it's out there, it's documented on social media because a picture is worth a thousand words. It's very easy to do that, most of those, uh, things. One thing you talked about and I've seen it firsthand with our school board, they're very supportive, they're, they're amazing. But some of the opportunities for music directors out there, you don't reach out directly to the school board member, but tell your principal, we would love to perform at a Christmas luncheon with your choir, with a small group ensemble, chamber ensemble. We'd love to play Christmas carols, we'd love to go, uh, we, and play, you know, theme music, whatever it is. If there's a national day of patriotic celebration, we'd like to send this to that board meeting and open it with like, um, I've been at those board meetings and I'm going to say board members feel largely like I feel. I just signed, uh, sixty, uh, personnel forms as far as time, time requisition sheets. That's what I did right before this, in between the fire alarm. The more opportunity I can get my head out of the paperwork and all of that, and actually see the product that I'm working so hard to create a, a good climate for. It, it's so important. And so when you get the opportunities, uh, to, to perform for the school board, it's, it's just a, a, I'm sure it's a breath of fresh air for you, Bob, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And one of the things like I, our, our state school boards association was doing a column and they wanted school board members to talk about what's your, what's your favorite thing about being a school board member? Um, and my favorite thing about being a school board member is, is graduation. Right? Because when I go to graduation, um, and we're handing out diplomas and we're looking the graduates in the eye and we're shaking their hand. You know, that's our reward to go, okay, another job, well done. You know, we were successful in helping this student, uh, make their way to the next level. So I think that, that, you know, the same thing is true. Whenever we can see kind of the investment and the energy and time manifest itself in a real way with our students, that is, that's the dividends, you know, that's the payback that we know that we're, we're doing the, the job that we should be doing.
Right.
Such great insights. So I have one more question before I do. Um, so Heather, uh, is joining us as one of our attendees. She's got her ha- hand raised, Heather, I don't know if that's intentional or not, but if you want to, if it is, you can leave your hand up here and I'll call you in. Uh, and give you speaking privileges in just a minute. Of course Heather was just on after hours with us a week or two ago. Um, but just want to ensure that's intentional before I click your microphone on there. Last question I have for you all before we move to the Q and A here. How, how do we need to handle a situation where perhaps the, the principal or the superintendent or a school board member is unintentionally wrong simply because maybe they don't have all of the information? And, and I'll share with you a, a, an example right now that we're seeing a lot as, as the usage of S R funds. There's a lot of misunderstanding as it relates to the S R funds within music programs. And we have a lot of band directors coming back saying, hey, my principal, my superintendent, my school board says I can't use S R funds for these particular things that we know, eh, I think you actually can. What is a productive way that, um, music educators can navigate those sticky situations? And Chris will start with you, uh, with their principal.
Yeah, I, I've got to say, I would be very impressed with any, you know, music educator that came and had a conversation with me, uh, and, and had researched the, as their and read it and been able to look into it. Um, besides just hearsay or something like that. But if they came in with the packet and, and, and the, the text inside it, that'd be very impressive. I'd probably start talking to them about becoming an administrator in the future. Uh, but I think, I think that's again, chain of command is going to be very important, how you approach the situation. Uh, again, you're the advocate for your program. There's no fault in that, but how you handle that is very important. But, uh, I, I think it would be important and, and at everyone's sort of at a, a a level playing field here. So often you look at federal funds and different pots of money that the federal government and state governments give you. And it's very difficult sometimes to interpret what pot it's, it can come out of, what I can appropriate or earmark for this and that. And it's going to be so important for, uh, band directors to, if, if they can find precedent and show, you know, a lot of times it, we, we don't, we might say, no, I can say, you know, sometimes I'm like, I'm not sure how to do that. And we sort of wash it over. If you could show us the way, I'm not against it. If you can show me a way that's been done or precedent where someone was able to word it right, get it through in a certain way. Um, because sometimes it's just very difficult to navigate that language that outlines how money can, you know, be used.
Yeah, that's such a good point. And I, I couldn't imagine both as a principal and school board, the amount of information, particularly right now, as we're kind of on the tail end of this pandemic, the amount, the amount of information coming at you that you have to read, understand, interpret, apply and communicate in a very short period of time.
Right. It's something else. Yeah, it, it, just real quick, a side note on that, some of those to keep in mind. Uh, perspective for music educators and anybody, uh, because you've got to understand in my email right now, I've probably got sixty emails since we started this, uh, call. And it's, everybody knows that money's out there, every single vendor. And so they're all vying for it. And, and I'm my, I, I guarantee I have sixty emails that I've missed that are, uh, pitching me a product. And so it's going to be very important for, for music educators to understand that, that, that money is sticky. Right now, the money is flowing, the federal government has appropriated, they've given, but also in school board, the perspective of accountability and transparency are coming. And so we've got to make sure that we are very, very good with that money, very transparent with that money. Because it's here now, it's free flowing now, but there's going to be accountability on the backend. And so where would administrators put that money? There's going to be a huge push for learning loss, for academic incentives and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Great perspective, Chris. Thanks. Bob, how about for you navigating those sticky situations where maybe a school board member doesn't understand, have all the information or perhaps just misinterpreted the information?
So I think I, I completely agree with what Chris said, right? It's, it's if you come in with facts and information, you know, to demonstrate how this is possible, then they'll go, wow, I didn't realize that, you know, that maybe they were under, you know, they, they misunderstood it. Or they read an article where it was, you know, wasn't all a hundred percent reported. You know, the details of how it, it can be utilized. And I think that's where, uh, some of the materials that have been coming out from the federation, from, uh, some of the companies and, and others have focused on, um, you know, where in the S R legislation does this fit? You know, within the fifteen guidance areas, you know, where does instruments fit into that? Where does, uh, PPE fit into that for the music room? Where does, um, summer camp funding for accelerated learning for arts programs? Where does that, what line item does that fit in? And if you come in with that information, then it's harder for someone to say, yeah, you can't use it that way. Um, as opposed to, yeah, well, we're not going to use it that way. And, and they may decide that, you know what? Yeah, I, we know that we can, but there are other things that we have, that we have to prioritize. And maybe we may not be able to use it for that. And that may be an answer. And, and that's, you know, and, and that's based on the school district's judgment on what are their priorities? And what are their individual needs in this environment? So I would say go in with your facts, um, and make sure you have the data supported like Chris said. Um, but you know, just because you have the facts and data, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to win the argument. And you have to be prepared for that because you're not, you're not necessarily going to win every argument. And sometimes, you know, there are people that even if they are wrong and you prove them that they are wrong, they're not going to admit that they're wrong. Because that's, you know, we have people that that's the way they behave. And unfortunately you just have to accept it sometimes because as, as a music educator, as the band director, uh, you know, there's, there's no win for you, you know, trying to push back against that.
Yeah, that's a great perspective too. I mean, with the, with the S R funds, I mean, we see a lot of districts making, uh, purchases for the benefit of the program. And we've, we've heard of some districts that have simply said, we are upgrading and replacing the HVAC and all of the schools. And that's how the funding is being used. And that's been the extent of the conversation. So again, and that's a very realistic and, and great thing to use the money for. And so again, it's just being involved in those conversations. So great insight. So great insights there on how to navigate and the importance of having the information and applying it towards your program. So gentlemen, as we approach the fifty minute mark, my last question I always like to ask is, do you simply have any closing thoughts or final advice on this topic that you would like to share with our listeners before we dial out tonight? So Chris, I'll start with you. Anything that you would like to add that we haven't discussed yet?
I don't think so. The, the biggest thing that, you know, for me and my perspective going back when I was reflecting all this was, uh, I, I wish in my communication piece with my administrators, again, having the, the big picture perspective, a really, really good principle of, of the guy that actually, he left this position and went to be a superintendent for me, said, we, we pay teachers to look through a keyhole of a door. But then sometimes we expect them to step back and see the whole door for what it is. And we've, we're paying them to look through that, that keyhole. And so I wish I, but we learn as we grow and get older and go through our career. And so I say the same thing with reflection is that I wish I'd had that perspective earlier on to step back, look at the big picture in what my request is. And the second thing, and is whenever I do get the ear of my administration earlier on, I wish I would have been a little more concise. I wish I would have had that perspective of what all they've got going on in their day. Sit down, present what I need very quickly, very respectfully of their time and make sure that if it's an emergency, a need or one or whatever it is, that I express that in a way that values their time and, and where all their capacity is at, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah, absolutely does. And I, I think the keyhole analogy is so important in this particular scenario because you are right. I mean, teachers are specialized, they're hired to do very specific things at specific grade levels with these very specific set of skills. And it can be challenging when, when that's the world we live in to step back and see. But you're right that the bigger ecosystem continues to evolve and we want to be a part of that conversation. So, well, Chris, absolutely. And, and Bob, thank you, you both so much. I really appreciate the insights that, that you all have provided this evening. And I think it's so important that we have those proactive conversations and that they're our only conversations that we have with our school board, our superintendent, our principals, not be negative, that we find ways to incorporate other positive, you know, meaningful ways to, to nurture that relationship. So really appreciate your time today. I appreciate the leadership that you, that you both are, are bringing during this challenging time. I can't imagine what it's like to, to live in your shoes right now as we come off this pandemic and the challenging year you've had. But I applaud your efforts and thank you for your leadership and, and everything you're doing to make music vibrant and education vibrant in your communities. Well, thanks, Chris. Appreciate it and everybody joining us. Thanks for being a part of tonight's conversation on after hours conversations for music educators. Now, as a quick reminder, our next episode is going to be in two weeks. That's April twentieth on how to maximize the relationship with your local music store. And we look forward to having you join us. In the meantime, be sure to hit that subscribe button. Go get your Fauci ouchie when it's your turn, wear a mask, wash your hands. Let's get this pandemic out of the way and move on and have a wonderful summer. In the meantime, have a great evening. Thanks, everyone.
You've been listening to After Hours, Conversations for Music Educators presented by Amro Music. This podcast is produced by Nick Everwater, Emily McGee and Joel Hurd in Memphis, Tennessee. You can hear and see more conversations at amromusic.com/afterhours.